Welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board in the Blute Conference Room on September 25. It's our third meeting of the fiscal year. I think it's more than that, I think it's the fourth. But in any event, it's early days in the fiscal year. And I'm Alex Weitz, the chairman. And we go around the table. If I tried to introduce everyone, I would undoubtedly slip up and they would be crossed. So why don't you introduce yourselves?
My name is Edward Duffy, member.
Emily Ennis, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
I'm Emily Martin, I'm the Edmonds Planning Board.
Brian Fers, member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Okay. We're sending some minutes around the table. And at some point, we're going to see if people are happy with them.
I think they made it this far.
And then we're going to approve them, hopefully.
Just started here.
But they're going to go. There's only one topic.
Paper.
Exactly. We're saving paper.
Saving trees.
Here at the Milton Planning Board.
Ecologically sound, Emily.
Now, our next meeting is going to be next Monday at 6:30 at the high school, where we are going to, with any luck, approve the housing production plan. And the selectmen are going to be there. And with any luck, they are going to also approve it. And we are going to have minutes pre-written, which we are going to approve after the meeting.
What time at the high school?
What?
What time?
6:30.
Thank you.
Do we have a room number yet?
Room 001.
001, Austin.
That's not the...
Okay. Well, that's exciting. So that's next Monday. Then next Tuesday, what happens?
Can you stick on Monday for a second?
Yeah, because it's even more exciting than that.
Oh, yes. That's just the precursor.
That is. It's the appetizer before the main event, which is at 7:00, we have the final public forum for the master plan. And our consultants will be introducing the draft master plan to the public. I believe it's actually on the town's website now, last I saw. So people can go and download it and have a look. If you go to the main website, on the left-hand side, there's a link that says "master plan." Takes you to the master plan page. So the consultants will present the draft master plan. It'll be sitting around for a month or so before town meeting. So there'll be plenty of time to get public comment back. And I know the planning board and the master plan committee, and I believe the selectmen, have already seen the first round of the draft. So we're continuing to collect comments from them on it. So that's from 7:00 to 9:00 in the Milton High School auditorium on Monday, the 29th.
All right. That's a no-miss event. Next, I should announce, because I've been reminded that I should announce, that this meeting is being recorded. Twice-recorded, duly-recorded. And it is being televised. So be advised. Now, our next meeting would be October 9th. But I gather, Brian, you have a conflict?
I have a conflict, but it doesn't... I can either try to work around it.
Let me do it.
If we have anything serious on the schedule, or I can...
Is anything big on for the 9th, Mel?
I'll be late to that meeting.
You'll be late?
Yes.
We have a public hearing on...
333 Brushhill Road.
We do have a public hearing scheduled.
Seven o'clock, though.
Okay. I think I'll be able to make 7:00. That shouldn't be an issue.
This is... 333 Brushhill Road is renewing the special permit that we issued a few years ago for brushwood.
Right.
Okay.
You received the documents at the last meeting. Emily, yours is in your folder.
Excellent.
What else is on the... We're going to have to meet if we got that advertised.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'll try to make it. I'll do my best.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. But that's about it for now.
Okay.
That is it.
That is it. So it may be a quick meeting.
Yes.
Okay. And the 23rd is a meeting. How does that strike?
There's a Milton Gala event that night for the library.
They always schedule a lot of important nights.
I don't know if we're concerned about that conflict or not.
That's really funny.
Milton Library Gala is the night of the conference.
Okay. So what do the people think? The people being, of course, the members of the planning board.
I have... Or Brian and I both have a master plan committee meeting on the 16th. So we wouldn't be able to move it till then. Do we actually have anything scheduled for the 23rd? It's the meeting before town meeting.
It's the meeting before town meeting. We could think about doing it on the 22nd.
Wednesday, the 22nd.
I have a conflict.
On the 22nd?
Yep.
Could we do it?
On the 22nd?
Could we meet before town meeting?
We could meet before the town meeting.
We're going to do that anyway. Okay.
Shall we try that?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. If there's no major changes after the public hearings tonight, there'd be no reason to meet on the 23rd.
But we're meeting on the 9th.
Well, yeah, we've got that as well.
So I'll put you at 6:30 on... 6:30 and the 27th?
27th.
Yeah. We can even...
That gives you 45 minutes to do something.
It gives us an hour. You know that the town meeting does not start at 7:30 sharp because some people...
We can also check in.
...straggle in.
Yeah. Yeah, 6:30 should be fine.
Mm-hmm.
The 23rd is out.
The 23rd is out. And if we need another meeting between the 9th and the town meeting, Emily will coordinate a good date. Okay. So the 23rd is out.
Yep.
We now have done the master plan committee. We've done the special town meeting. It's citizens speak time. Any citizens who want to address the planning board on a matter that isn't going to be a part of our public hearing should feel free to come, approach the board, and speak. I guess we'll pass on to the next issue, which is a public hearing in five minutes. But take a look at... You've all been given the housing production plan. And as you recall, you saw the last draft. And we got some comments. And we have addressed all the comments in this. And we got comments. Katie Collin made some comments. Ed made some comments. I made some comments. We've had a number of comments from people. And I think when you read this document, you'll find it to be in order and ready to be approved next Monday night. But if you find a burning issue between now and then, over the weekend, if you find a burning issue, let Bill know about the burning issue before Monday night.
For those that wanted a redline, it came to you electronically. That would show you the different changes and who put in what. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It looks to me to address the issues that were raised before. Okay. Now, you're going to... We're going to discuss 131 Elliott Street and the document that you received tonight. This is... Phil, why don't you just briefly describe what's in the document?
The 40B application, or the comprehensive permit, went to the zoning board of appeals the end of August. That hearing started with the preliminaries. It went through who's doing what. It gave an overview of the project. And at that time, the zoning board of appeals, who is the ruling body there, asked for a peer review. The peer review was done. You have the peer review documents before you. And you have the applicant's response to the peer review documents. What I didn't give you were the stormwater calculations. If anybody wants the calculations, see me. I think about the only one that really does a lot with those would be Mike. And I think you can tell by what Horsley Witten has already done that most of your issues would be addressed there. There's three sets of plans. There's a traffic component in there. There's an independent traffic person hired by Horsley Witten for the zoning board that addresses traffic. And then there's Jack Gillan's response to that. You have all of that. Although you have no official play with that process, comments are... You know, you'd give your comments back to the selectmen, and they will turn those same comments over as coming from the planning board and from staff. I know that the senior staff for the town is getting documents for this. I know DPW Engineering already has it. The others will be getting it tomorrow. The selectmen have copies of it. That's it.
Now, this occurs next Tuesday, I believe.
It does.
Okay. So on... Should we, at the end of our housing production plan...
If anybody has comments, that would be a very good time to give me those comments.
Right. I don't think that we need to put it on the... Because we're not going to vote on the comments. It'd simply be the individual comments, which would be forwarded to the selectmen to forward to the board of appeals. So we won't mess up the agenda by putting this on. But if you do have thoughts about how the plan... If there are emissions, or if there are desirable changes, then they should be communicated with Bill. And he will forward them. Now, it's time for the public hearing. And let's see. How we'll start this. Shall we start with the two articles we pushed over from last time? One which had to do with grandfathering. And the other one of which had to do with signage in the business district. Shall we do that? Let's start with the grandfathering one. As you may recall, the way I read the grandfathering article, when it said... Where it says as follows. Grandfather... There it is. It says, "It may be otherwise extended or altered where such extension or alteration does not render the structure non-conforming with respect to other requirements." So say you had a frontage deviation. Let's take my own house as an example. I have a porch, five feet deep, on the front of the house. It's 15 feet from the street, rather than the required 30 feet from the street. And then, five feet in, 20 feet from the street, still is most of the house. About 35 feet of house, set back 20 feet. And then, there's another wing of the house that's set back another 10 feet. And it actually is 30 feet from the street. What I read this to say was that if this passes as a matter of right, I could extend the front of my house to the front of the porch, 15 feet of the street, and run it all the way down to where the house now ends. And in my view, that would be an extremely undesirable result. So, Mr. Cochrane, you've come right up to be heard on this, so...
Well, I think, yeah, the last discussion, there was some notion that perhaps the standard ought not to be as of right, but maybe a special permit. I do think that it ought not to be a variance standard because, as a practical matter, it's impossible to prove hardship in variance matters. But if someone has a tasteful addition to the house that is acceptable with the neighbors and the butters, then it ought to be done by a special permit, not simply as of right. I do see the concern with respect to as-of-right approval. So I would suggest that the language be amended and that the board make a recommendation to recommend approval, subject to amendment, which would be striking out the words "as of right," but within the existing... Strike out that may be extended or altered by means of a special permit, rather than by "as of right."
But we'd have to describe the special permit somewhere. It seems to me...
No. The special permit standards that are applicable generally in the bylaw and which are applied weekly by the board of appeals ought to be the standards that they apply. And they do it routinely.
So you think that my house, which the porch, 15 feet from the street, there should be a special permit allowing the entire front of the house to be 15 feet from the street, going up two stories?
Yeah.
I think that that requires more thought. And I would suggest that we bump this one back to the planning board for further study.
That's fine as well. I'm not...
What does the board think?
I guess I have two questions. One would be, is the concern less from the board if frontage was removed from that? So if we were dealing with strictly side and rear setbacks? And secondly, what would be grounds upon which we could reject a special permit actually be? And would our rejection be able to be upheld if it was based on a tasteful status?
It wouldn't be before you. It would be before the board of appeals. And the determination would be whether or not it was detrimental to the neighborhood and otherwise not in conformity with the general intent of zoning. It simply would remove the obligation to prove hardship.
Hardship, I understand that, right. So essentially, and a butter would still have the ability to suggest it was detrimental to the neighborhood.
Correct.
But it gives ZBA a greater threshold to overlook that.
I could see potentially removing frontage because I think the vast majority of applications would probably be for side or rear setbacks, rather than for frontage. And you could still use the hardship requirement for the frontage. But certainly, because frontage really determines what the building feels like from the street, much more so than side and rear, it would be quite a change to a neighborhood if a front porch goes up...
I agree.
...multiple stories and is filled in and all of that. Much less so if an addition is put on to the side or the rear. So...
But assume my porch went into the side yard and the porch, or the deck, whatever, extends two feet from the sideline. To say that the entire house then can be moved two feet from the sideline with a special permit is, rather than a variance... I mean, it does soften the zoning. It does seem to me that this is something that a little more thought might actually yield a better result.
I agree.
I kind of think it through something as you're saying that. Again, if your side setback made contact with the neighbor's driveway, and that wasn't so offensive, but then you carried it back to an adjacent location to his house, and it was that close to him, it might get to the point where it's like, yeah...
I mean, I guess the question, though, is... There's always going to be examples of what won't fit into the criteria. Is that why we make it the special permits standard as opposed to by right? So that the ZBA has the ability to say, that's not the intent here. And it is detrimental to the neighborhood. I understand the purpose of the bylaw. It's... There's a lot of situations in town where people can't do what they're hoping to do without a huge amount of process and extra money. But I sympathize with our chair's concern as well. There's going to be situations where this isn't appropriate, and...
The bylaw, for the most part, is protecting the neighbors, isn't it?
That's correct.
The purpose of zoning is to protect everyone else from what you might do with your...
Exactly.
Exactly.
So I think, you know...
Whether that's reasonable is a difference.
We shouldn't be softening zoning without due diligence and due course. I would agree with that.
Yeah. And I would certainly say, and it sounds like we're sort of all there, that removing as a matter of right and inserting by means of a special permit would be the minimum change for this.
That's the minimum standard I do like to do here.
Yeah, exactly. Whether or not we send it back for further study. Sadly, I missed the first part of the discussion on this, so...
Well, the warrant committee seemed inclined to send it back for a little more study.
I'm happy to recommend that the board do that. I do not... We did not have time to put together the type of materials that I'd hoped to do to help present. I do... I have a fundamental concern, however, with the way our zoning bylaws are written. They don't account for the existence of what's in town today. We have a town that was developed, I think magnificently, before zoning happened. And the stuff that's come along after zoning isn't nearly as nice as what was done before zoning was enacted. And I think that town bylaws ought to recognize that more affirmatively, more formally, and ought to encourage reinvestment in those areas that where pre-existing non-conforming structures exist. I think your example... I understand your example. You don't have direct next-door neighbors who are going to be necessarily impacted. But there are lots of other neighborhoods where that could happen. And I think the investment that occurs outweighs the impact that a minor modification, or a modification to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling would have on its surrounding neighborhood. That's just the way I think. And I think that it is important for the town to begin to recognize how wonderful and beautiful and how well-considered the old subdivisions of this town were put together. Magnificent homes and small lots. We have hundreds of 5,000-square-foot lots with three-story homes that aren't set back from the front yard. They're not set back from side yard. And they fit. And they fit nicely. And I think the ability to modify those without having to go get a variance ought to be available to homeowners, recognizing that the standards today for living aren't what they were. You know, kitchens need to be larger. You need to have more than one bathroom. You need to have larger bedrooms. Those things that make living reasonable ought to be able to be accommodated with respect to the expansions, the modifications, the updating of old dwellings. But there's character in this town, beautiful character in this town, that ought to be acknowledged. And the ability to modify those homes ought to be available in a reasonable manner.
And this is not a problem that's unique to Milton alone. There are plenty of towns in the New England area that developed exactly the way we did, long before zoning. And if you look at the houses on the lots, they do not conform to the current zoning requirements. And yet, they're the beautiful houses that everybody all want to own. So I don't have a problem with this coming back for further study. It may be that we want to see what some other towns have done to address this problem themselves and see if it gives us a way forward on this.
Well, I think, to everything you just said, I think part of what this board needs to think about in looking at this bylaw is a way to make sure that in asking for a variance or a special permit or relief from this particular zoning, that they're actually doing it in order to retain the character and not to tear the home down and keep a setback that was intended for a different purpose. So I think there are things that we probably want to think about here that need to be implied. But I understand the concern. I sympathize with the concern. But I think we need to be very careful about what we're trying to do here. There's been a lot of McMansionism in Massachusetts, and we seem to have been somewhat protected from it to date. So I'd like to think we can continue to do that.
There may be some guidelines that we can put into place that give...
Exactly. I was going to say that I don't disagree with you, but design standards...
No way, Alex. Actual design standards.
Design standards are... And you shake your head, Ned. But actually, when you say you want to see these houses preserved, you don't just slap something on the side of them and say, "There you are." You actually get a professional in who looks at it and does something that, in fact, enhances the neighborhood.
No question about it. And that happens routinely. And people who desire to modify their dwellings spend time and money developing plans, sharing them with neighbors, and getting neighbor buy-in. It's the rare occasion, but there are occasions where there's already a war going on over the fence. And so the war that's going on over the fence prevents an agreement on what is otherwise a pretty nice result. And because there's the war and opposition, you can't prove hardship, and the board of appeals has to deny it. And that's the rare case, but it does happen. And it would take... It would reduce the temperature in those cases. It would take some of the... Look, I think it is appropriate to refer it back to study because there's a lot of discussion and not enough understanding as to where the outcome of this might really come. So I would recommend that it be referred back to study. But I think it's an important thing to keep moving forward with because we are a town that is... We have magnificent neighborhoods in town that suffer from their inability to be improved.
Okay. We will expect you to keep our feet to the fire. And who else wants to be heard in this particular article? If no one, I suggest to the board that we could vote to recommend a town meeting to refer this back to the planning board for a study.
So here?
Second?
All in discussion? All in favor? Aye. Let's do the signed ones together. Let's do the PUD, the condominium... Let me just get the title of this.
Land Unit Townhouse Development.
Land Unit Townhouse Development. Okay. Now, this is an article that we submitted. But Mr. Cochrane has a client who's already interested in using the zoning. Isn't that interesting? So why don't you say a few words?
Thank you. And we did bring a brief PowerPoint presentation to help set this back in context. I'm Ned Corcoran. As you know, I'm joined by Jack Dolly, who is the principal of Northland Residential Corporation. And it is Northland's interest in redeveloping the St. Pius Rectory property on Brushhill Road that has really been the impetus behind this proposed bylaw. It is a, in general terms, and I'll turn it over to Jack to describe more particularly the parcel, but it is a large, eight-and-a-half-acre parcel on Brushhill Road. Northland Residential has taken title to the property. Their redevelopment is not subject to permits and approvals. But their primary interest has been to work with the neighborhood, to work with the town, to arrive at a level of density that would be greater than normal under current zoning, but which would be not as great as might be secured if they were to follow the comprehensive permit path. It is property that abuts a public housing project on the Boston side of the line. And so density and how that density is massed and how it's developed is important. We conducted, since last April 1st, six, five or six meetings with the neighborhood group, a couple of site walkthroughs with the neighbors. So five or six meetings at the St. Pius Church, a series of meetings... Pius Church, a series of meetings with this board and the development of the bylaw. We think it is a very well-written, well-crafted bylaw. Obviously significantly designed to fit the requirements of this property, has some other application, we believe. I, for one, am not concerned that it could be considered overly specific, but I do think there's some, but there is some general notion to it. It's really that the, it is a function of how we're doing, have been doing zoning of larger properties. But I think, given the fact that the board has created a subcommittee to work on a more general approach to zoning of large estates, that there's a clear message being sent to the town by this board, that it is paying very careful attention to the development pressures that are coming before the town, and that a very sensitive and sensible means of arriving at a more general approach to zoning would be appropriate. And I look forward, I've been asked to serve on that committee, and I look forward to doing that with the board. So with that, let me hand it over to Jack for an overview of the property and the process, and we can get into further questions and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. As Ned said, I'm Jack Dolly from Northland Residential. I'm the owner and the president of the company. Bill, if I could ask you to advance maybe to the fourth slide, which will show a plan, and I'll try to speak to that. Yeah, keep going. This is a picture or an image of the property. It is centered in the middle. As you can see, it's not quite rectangular. The property is 8.58 acres of land with about 405 feet of frontage at the bottom of that image along Brushhill Road. It runs not quite obviously perpendicular to Brushhill Road, to the rear on the right-hand side and, I guess, obliquely on the left-hand side, to the rear property line, which happens also to be the city of Boston, town of Milton, property line. The property is generally flat, very little topography, and by our analysis is free of wetlands. It is presently improved with an existing driveway, which you can see enters the property approximately in the middle of the frontage along Brushhill Road, curls around to a structure and two-thirds back, which is a circa 1913 building known as the William Dupree House. This was also part of the Tucker Estate, which encompasses land both to the left and right of that, of the property specific. There's also a small carriage house to the rear. The property's been owned by St. Pius Rectory for many, many years, St. Pius Church, excuse me, for many, many years, and was used as the rectory. Notably, the parish priest would, if he didn't drive and walk to the rectory, he would use what we refer to as this tail or sliver of land, which is in the upper left-hand corner. I don't have a wand, if you will. There's a 25-foot tail that's sort of shaped like a hockey stick in the upper left-hand corner, excuse me, that takes you out to Cushing Street. There are five abutters, budding parcels on the Cushing Street side and two on the Dana, Dana Row, Dana Ave, I guess, Ave? Ave side to the southeast. The property's been a bit, not abandoned, unused by the church for the last four or five years. I put it under agreement last summer and took title to it this past spring. As Ned said, we've gone through a number of meetings with the planning board, the selectmen, immediate abutters, and general neighborhood group with respect to our vision of utilizing the property. And I'll dive into that. Bill, if I can ask you to advance it one more time. This is, this is a little bit of a deceiving photo because Brushhill Road is actually straight. There's not a big bend in it like this. But the fronted is, is recognized by a large stone wall and stone entry. The stone wall is probably, oh, I don't know, two feet thick and at a minimum waist-high. Fairly dense stand of mature trees throughout the property. Unmaintained, unmanaged lot of overgrowth, dead trees, invasive species exist, not only along Brushhill Road frontage in somewhat of an unkempt fashion, but certainly as you enter the property. One more slide, please. This is the existing rectory building known as the Rectory or the William Dupree House. It was built on or about 1913, 14. It is a, well, it does qualify for the, as a historic house under the historic provisions of, under the provisions of the Milton Historic Bylaw. And so there is, it can be demolished, subject to a demolition delay. We've had a fair amount of conversation about whether the building should be retained or not retained. We have come down on the former, retaining it and modifying it, reusing it, rehabilitating and reusing it as a number of residential units. So there was originally a circle, as you can see, that entered the house. It's been modified over the years for different purposes, so if we took you back to some of the historic, historic pictures, although it's close to this, it's not identical to this. But it's in generally good shape. We did a structural survey of it. It's, I should say it's stucco on the outside with a slate roof, and the foundation is stone, pretty dry, all things considered, for a stone foundation of 100 years old. The roof is intact, the floors are intact on the inside. It's been entered and used by local kids, so it's not too pretty on the inside. At this point, a lot of the windows have been boarded up or broken and/or boarded up. There is some power in it, it hasn't been heated in a number of years. So that is the existing house. I did not give you a picture of the carriage house. The carriage house is, was a daycare facility for the church for a number of years. So, next slide. As of right, I should, I should maybe go ask you to go, yeah, there you go, I'm sorry. The zoning for this area is residence A zoning, 40,000 square foot minimum, lot size 150, 150 feet of frontage, not 151, I don't know where the 1 came from. Setback requirements along the perimeter of each, any created lot would be 30, 15, 30, front side and rear. And an as-of-right zoning, without any variances, we believe we could get seven subdivision lots along a 500-foot cul-de-sac, which is the next image, Bill. Pretty pedestrian land plan. We've looked at others. There's actually a way that you might be able to get eight in there. Geometrically, the land area, if you do 40,000 square feet into the square footage of eight-and-a-half acres, it would say that you can get a strong eight, but the geometry starts to factor in. This isn't a very compelling plan. It's, you know, we certainly didn't put any color in it to make it compelling, but it's pretty plain. It's just a cul-de-sac of a little, little less than 500 feet, and then as-of-right zoning, frontages and acreage. The two lots at the base of the cul-de-sac, obviously directly abut the Boston City property line, and on the other side of the Boston City property line is a city of Boston housing project. And it is what it is. So we began exploring alternatives to this. Given that we own the property, I could proceed to do this, my basis is such that it would support it, but we wanted to explore whether or not what Northland does day in and day out, and that is try to create what we call multifamily for-sale senior housing communities, townhouse condominium communities that are targeted for empty-nester active adults with their land planning and their unit design, whether or not we could see a pathway to that sort of use. So if we go ahead, another slide, please. We do have a development plan in here, but the narrative part of that is, is our, or maybe I'll let you go to the plan and, Bill, and let, have the plan, so, and I can cite this. This is the same parcel that we spoke about before, although it's been rotated, I guess, counterclockwise, so that Cushing is more or less at the, kind of at the bottom of the image as opposed to Dana. But we're proposing to enter the property at the same break in the existing stone wall, historic stone wall, I might add, along Brushhill Road, and developing a circular loop road around and within which we are proposing to cluster, are there 14 new buildings? I forget, we did, I forgot the number, but a number of new buildings, along with the retention of the rectory building. These new buildings, I'll work my way from the entrance around counterclockwise. Those are two, three, two, and three-unit structures on the Dana, Dana Ave side. These are two-to-three-bedroom, 2,000 to 2,400 square-foot townhouse units, each of which would have a first-floor master bedroom, each of which would have an attached embedded two-car garage. The second floor would be a one- or two-bedroom of space, and generally some sort of loft-homewave space incorporated up there. It would be built on a full foundation. Given that the site is flat, the lower levels can't, well, I suppose they could be finished if they met certain code requirements, but they wouldn't be finished in the sense of a, I'll use the term ski lodge, if you will, where you have a walkout potential in the lower level to add additional square living, you know, living area. So again, working around counterclockwise, two, three, two, three, and then along the rear property, you'll see, again, several smaller, two buildings with several smaller structures in the center of the rear property line. Those are an attempt to build and provide some affordable housing product, which I'll get to. And then back around the Cushing side and in the middle, again, a clustering of two- and three-unit townhouse structures. We worked hard with the neighborhood group and specifically with the abutters on sideline, front yard, and rear line setbacks, all with an attempt to address visibility, massing encroachment on the existing neighborhoods. Like I said a moment ago, existing sideline setbacks on the conventional zoning are 30 feet along the front, 15 along the sidelines, that would be Cushing and Dana, and 30 along the rear. We have increased those through a series of conversations and are proposing, and the zoning bylaw speaks to this, a front yard setback along Brushhill Road of not less than 60 feet, and some of these lines are on the plan but hard to see here. The purpose of that would be so that the visibility of what took place on the property was muted or largely diminished. The neighborhood came up with this notion of a development plan that followed a theme, an evolved estate theme, given that the entire area was originally estates and it has evolved over time into a series of single-family lots and subdivisions, and this being the largest out parcel, one of the larger out parcels remaining, to approach it through some form of evolved estate approach. And that, that notion was a really interesting one because it spoke a lot to how we use the land. The setbacks and buffers, and if you will, invisibility from Brushhill Road, maintenance of the stone wall along Brushhill Road, increased setbacks along the Cushing and Dana Ave sidelines to have thick existing vegetative buffers between new homes and the property line and existing homes beyond were embedded into this plan. So front yard is 60 feet, side are 35, and rear is 30. But as you'll see, we have tried to undulate along the sides and particularly along the front, the massing of the buildings, so that there isn't a wall of massing. The buildings are twisted and turned, and the 35-foot setback and/or 60-foot setback along the front or side are really point setbacks. In reality, in many cases, it's a good deal greater than that. The blue line vaguely visible on the Cushing and Dana side, try to provide a dimension to, to the, to the closest actual house from the property line. And I can't read my own plan here, but it is fairly substantial what the actual structure of Cushing to the property line and then into the property is, and likewise along Dana Ave. So this plan calls for a total of 36 units. We are proposing that 10% of the 36 units, rounded up to four units, be provided as affordable or inclusionary housing units onsite. We are proposing to retain, rehabilitate, and reuse the existing William Dupree House, which is located kind of dead center, maybe a little offset center, and a circular road accessing this. We are proposing not to do anything with the, what I'll call the property tail, which is located on the left-hand corner of the property and goes out to Cushing. That would be retained as part of the acreage, and I guess if you wanted to go to church, you could walk to church. We are also proposing to maintain the wall. The notion is to clean out the existing woodland perimeters of dead, diseased, invasive materials, augment it, thank you, that's perfect, augment that with additional material, plant materials, and try to maintain, if you will, a managed buffer around the perimeter. Not, not a manicured buffer, woodland buffer around the edge, but a managed one, so that it is, it isn't just, I guess, crazy wild, that it is, it provides a bit of an amenity for the abutters, and it provides an amenity, a backyard wooded environment for the residents of the community. Again, the target audience here is, what we're really trying to do is develop a housing choice for existing Milton residents that are looking to downsize from a house that they raised their family in over the last 25 to 30 years, and that quite possibly have a second home or third home elsewhere in the state or country, on the Cape or New Hampshire, Maine, or maybe they travel to Florida, the Berkshires. We've done, I've probably done 1,000 units of this type of product type in my career. The best example of this at present is a project in Belmont, Massachusetts, sort of a similar, fairly urban, dense town on the side of McLean Hospital. We bought 38.6 acres and developed 121 units of this product, 111 of which is new ground-up, 10 of which is, nine, four, five, 10 of which is in three buildings that we rehabilitated and reused. We have extensive buffers around the perimeter for all of the reasons that we have, we agree that they're necessary here, different constituency. We have a mental institute on one side, we have an arboretum on another side, we have a very busy road called Mill Street along one side, and all of which we wanted to sort of maintain a fairly dense clustering. That density, there's three, there's actually three parcels of land, but it's on average around 4.5 units to the acre. We're slightly less than that here. And working with the selectmen, the planning board, the direct abutters, and the neighborhood group over a series of meetings have crafted a zoning proposal that speaks to this. over a series of meetings have crafted a zoning proposal that speaks to this plan in, in part, and speaks to an opportunity to possibly use this type of zoning in a very limited fashion on, on other sites throughout town for the provision of a different type of housing, for a different housing choice for hopefully existing Milton residents seeking to stay in the town and downsize their, their, their housing. So, that's a lot of words. There's more slides if, if you want to sort of scooch through them, Bill, but that is the presentation.
So, if you just jump back one, that's, we have met, we met the other night with the historical commission. We've met a couple of times with the historical commission. I know that Steve O'Donnell, who's the chair, has been at a number of the neighbor meetings. The idea would be to truncate, on the top, you see the, the existing frontage of the Dupree House, and then below showing that a wing, which is really sort of an old servants quarters kitchen area, being removed. It would be replaced with, with garage on that side. But the, restore the real bones and the guts of the building and provide probably two affordable units in there. So, I would just make one other comment and then turn it over to the board. Jack mentioned, you know, the, the bylaw says 10%. When you really look at the number of units proposed and the number of affordables proposed, it's really 11, a little bit north of 11% is the actual percentage, although the bylaw calls for a minimum of 10% of affordable. It's really 11 is the actual.
It could be 12%. But, I, I mean, let's address that because at the last town meeting, we were, someone said, "Well, this only says 10%, let's move it up to 12%." And it was a really close vote. And it, it does seem to me that there either is some thought that 10% is the right amount, which I think it is, given the fact that it's the percentage the state uses, but people, people say, "Well, why not 15%? Why not, why not more affordable housing?" And, and what is the, what is the response?
I think the starting point is that providing a level of affordability on a for-profit reuse of property like this is a very different animal than providing affordability on a subsidized basis. The subsidized programs allow significantly greater density to take advantage of subsidies that allow you to be able to provide up to 25% affordable. It's a very different scenario when you're trying to provide affordables in a scenario like this, where each affordable unit is developed at a significant loss to the developer. I think the, the net loss for each affordable unit is about $400,000. So, that's a, that's a significant amount of money to make up with density on the affordable side of, of the, of the, of the aisle. And, you know, it, it is appropriate to think about 10% as a number. In this case, it's really 11. I mean, you look at the, at the reality of it, if it's, it's 11%, it is not 10 and change. It's 11.11%. You know, that helps move the needle a little bit. I know that the town is really concerned about the issue of 40B and the, and the lack of affordability in town, and how can we get to affordability? The factor of the matter is that, you know, we are, as a town, and this is my just thinking somewhat on my own, but we are in that bullseye of potential 40B process, and I don't think we'll ever get out of it because we probably won't ever make up the number. And adding 1% here or 1% there and, and rendering a, a development that much more economically difficult to achieve because we want to just get to a number is not the right approach to addressing the issue of affordability. We really have to take it on as a town. The Affordable Housing Production Plan is a great start, and it's, it's the right way to go. But, you know, arriving at a number that is, that is fairly substantive, and is a substantial number, 10%, that's a significant component of, of a development. To arrive at a higher percentage, you now have to turn around and arrive at a higher density count, because you've got to figure out how the developer makes up for the, the net loss of each unit that is there. It's, it's easy to pull the numbers out of the air. The difficulty is pulling the numbers, the numbers out of the ground and making the numbers work and making the development work for the town. When you push those, when you push those numbers too far, the developments don't work, and they push them into, you push them to either a 40B alternative or some other alternative that just doesn't do anything. It, it results in a poor development without any real benefit to the town. I think this has significant overall benefit to the town, a significant cost to the redevelopment of that historic structure. That took, there's some cost there to, to facilitate that. And that was a real strong desire of the historical commission. I think town meeting would, would agree that the restoration of that building was an important overall component to the redevelopment of this site. So, having said all that, I think that the, the real achievable number of 11.11% of affordable in this case is appropriate, it's doable, it's reasonable, and it will arrive at, it'd arrive at a well-considered, well-developed project, and it will benefit the town.
That's all. I appreciate all those comments. I guess my response to that is, that's fine for this project, perhaps. This guideline is supposed to be being structured for a limited amount of other opportunities here. And I share very much Mr. Whiteside's concern that we're gonna, that we face a tough vote because of that 10% number. We've already heard about it at the warrant committee. We certainly heard about it at the last town meeting. It was a very close vote, and I think it was decided by four, four people, I think? Four to six, one or the other? I wonder if there's an opportunity here to, without risking any ability to move forward with this project, which I think is a great project, look at something that, that allows for a bonus with density to provide for another 2.5% or even a more harsh standard, which is if you are between 10 and 12.5% or 15%, whatever this board decided the number would be, if there's some sort of monetary contribution to the housing fund. Something to make this more appealing for the town meeting vote, because I, I do think that this will be one of two fairly significant hurdles that we'll have to get over in getting this, this zoning through. And it played itself out at the last meeting pretty clearly.
There's something else we ought to consider, though, and that is there's a difference between housing that's on the subsidized housing inventory that counts to that and housing that is affordable but not affordable with a capital A. And one of the things that this development does is it creates or adds to a different housing type in this town. At townhouses, the smaller units, it is, can be a more affordable option than a single-family home, even though it's not on the subsidized housing inventory. It's something else that ought to come into play. And it does go into our ability as a town to provide different types of housing for the different needs that we see.
And along those same lines, I, I made this known, I didn't say it, but appreciating the comment about whether or not we can ever get to 10%, and then putting it aside, there's also a part of the town that, whether we ever get to 10% or not, would like to see us making a better effort.
Absolutely.
So, there's a, there's a part of this that does, that has nothing to do with the, the, whether or not it counts towards 40B, whether or not it qualifies, whether it's small A or big A affordable. It's, we want to do a better job of providing different housing types, and therefore we want our projects to have a higher component of affordable housing, small A, or at least some sort of contribution to creating more affordable housing, small A, somewhere in the town.
But, but that's to my, my point here.
I agree, I agree. So, that's rolling into your point now. I, I, I think this is a great project. I think Northland's a great developer, and because of that, I would question how affordable any of these units will really be. I think they're, it's a level of affordability that.
Well, that does come into play. Are you looking at affordability comparing it to a five-bedroom house, or, you know?
Last year, how many affordable units did the town produce, Bill? Or, seven?
Less than, two and a half years, seven.
Seven. It does seem to me that when we go out and create zoning for different housing types, we're trying to say to developers, "Here, look at this interesting zoning that we've produced, and it's actually to your advantage to use it rather than traditional zoning or 40B." And the more, and, I don't know, 10% is a lot of, is, is, in my view, a good percentage. It, it seems just right to me. I mean, it, it is a significant contribution by the developer without saying to the developer, basically, "Get lost because we want to do something unreasonable." So, I, it just seems to me that, and I ask the question because it is a financial, it, it, the town meeting can't just pull a number out of the air and have it work financially. You're the developer, and you know what works.
Yeah, I, I do. I think, I mean, I guess we can think out loud a little bit here. I, I think we are struggling with, frankly, town meeting really doesn't want to hear about developers' economics.
That's correct.
I, I don't know, you know, I don't know how many people are going to ride my, my coattails on that one. That's your problem, Jack. I, I say, I think we, you know, 10% works, and, and, and a lot are, and, and we can craft a rational and reasoned article, argument around it. I guess what I hear a member first saying is we have a bit of an optic problem, perception problem. And to, and maybe we should think about brainstorming on how we solve some of that. You know, where, where, you know, the pure economics, I'm gonna, an affordable unit's gonna sell for about $170,000, and it's gonna cost 210 to build. That's gonna be no contribution of Ned's time, my time, land, infrastructure, and, and that. So, you know, I, I'm, I start at a minimum, you know, order of magnitude, probably $50,000 in the hole, and, and I can fabricate and articulate numbers beyond that. But again, I've never found sympathetic art audiences when I plead poverty. I guess if we go to 15%, 15% of 36 is 5.4. Are we rounding up or are we rounding down? We round up that, that's a big jump from 5.4 to 6. We're at four. One notion that we've been scribbling here is, you know, the rectory building is, is big. It's a lot of structure. With two units in it, they're, they're nice units, and they have been earmarked as, as a place to put an affordable unit or two. It's conceivable I could very easily put three in there, and, and you would, you wouldn't know that there were three units in there versus two units in there. I'm not adding another structure to the site. My impervious calculation's not getting any greater. My coverage ratio is not getting any greater. Sure, I guess maybe my traffic count is a little higher, my bedroom count is a little higher. And I might be able to move the needle from five to four relatively, cost-effectively, and favorably from my perspective. And then how do you get from, if you, if you, if the, if the calculus is you round up no matter what the decimal point is?
I think we round down.
Because I'm.
It's the nearest number.
Okay.
You round up or down depending on where it is, or?
Yeah, .4 you'd round down, .6 you'd round up. .5.
How do you build happiness?
Well.
.5, you actually go to the even number.
So, that is, that is, you know, so that is an approach, one approach to, to, would be to do it that way. Another approach would be to make a, to have a bylaw, and I've seen this before, that provides you with the opportunity to provide affordable, let's use inclusionary. In fact, I hate the word affordable because we're really trying to sell it moderate-priced housing.
Right.
And this notion of affordable conjures up all the worst. But, the, a bylaw, any bylaw could be written in such a way where it provides an opportunity for a developer and a planning board to seek a contribution toward inclusionary housing, both in kind, physical product onsite, and through monetary compensation elsewhere. Whether, in, in the town of Hanover presently, I'm making a $130,000 contribution to the Hanover house, Hannover, Hanover, Hannover affordable housing customer. And, because that's what they want. So, you know, I, I think we all have a lot invested in this, not the least of which is me. So, not, you know, so immodest not to recognize that, but I would say the, the town, this board, and the residents behind me that have invested lots of time with me are interested in seeing something get done, and something get done that is, doesn't, they can live with, and that we can live with. So, I provide an option of either adding a unit in this building as opposed to another one on the site, which I think, I won't want to speak for the residents, but would be the, maybe the blindest approach to onsite housing, or some form of in-kind contribution, if there is such a thing, to the town. And that moves the needle up. And maybe the optic of 15% is helpful for town meeting members to, to come to acceptance of, of, of something like this.
So, if you just do numbers.
You're off by 1%.
If you add, well, if you add an affordable in the rectory, that would raise the total unit count to 37.
Yeah, so you're denominated.
So, now you're at 13.5%.
Yes, I mean, I think my, my opinion, you know, we can all have different opinions about what the right percentage number is. I think 15 sounds onerous, especially since we're at 10 on a townwide standard level. And I, I am concerned about making it a requirement to be above what we've sort of adopted as our townwide standard. I understand where Alex is coming from when it comes to deciding what, you know, what, whether you want to be restrictive on developers or you're trying to get something done here. I'm not sure how the bonus would really work here because there's not, you're not really, there's really no incentive, I don't think, for you. There's no ability to add additional density. That certainly wouldn't make the neighborhood happy based on what we've heard.
You could do the bonus, the, the ability to put funds and say the trust fund is the decimal point.
That's, that's where I'm kind of getting to.
You get your, your round number, and then anything above that is.
Anything between 10 and 12.5%. Perhaps you put a dollar figure on it, and it's just a pro-rata basis at that point.
12.5% is what this will cost at the town meeting, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, if you said, you know, your minimum is 12.5%, but if you're between 10 and, 10 and 12, you can use, you have to have a minimum of 10. You know, there's nothing, you can do below that, but you can contribute $25,000, $50,000, whatever the number is for each additional percent that you're off. I'm just throwing something out here, but it is an optic issue for me, I think, with the town meeting. I think it becomes a real stopping lack of town.
So, a minimum physical onsite of 10% and then 2.5% either onsite, or if that's not feasible, put in the trust fund. That could be interesting. And then any decimal point put in the trust fund.
Right. So, in that particular case, if he's putting up four, depending on where it comes out?
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't go as high as 15% because I think that, that sends a signal to, that Alex was talking about, to the developers that, right? Sure, come on in, but, yeah, exactly.
This is going to be the new standard. If you change the 10%, any new zoning will require the new percentage.
I agree with that.
I think that, given the fact.
That's why we're just working it back and forth, yeah.
My, my view is, given the fact, I think 10% is a significant. No, no, I mean, my, my view is, given the fact, I think 10% is a significant amount of housing. I think that discouraging developers from using the zoning that we, we go through such hoops to create is, is not something in our interest. And I think that those who say, we've got to do a better job in creating affordable housing, are not being honest. If they say that this developer providing four units, which is four more than the town has produced on the town farm, or anywhere else, is somehow shirking. I think that four units is, it's significant. And doing it, you know, saying 12% on these private developments, making them harder, is not going to get us to 500 units.
Oh, no, no.
It's not going to do it. It is simply a theoretical exercise that people are engaging in, which I, I don't think is productive.
Except that they're going to be the ones that vote in the zoning. That's my concern.
I think your point about hindering development by raising it above 10%, in fact, if we hinder development, we ain't going to get any affordable housing, are we?
We may get, if we, if we push it into 40B, we're going to, and it's all rental.
Yeah.
Then we're going to get a treasure trove of affordable housing.
That's right.
But what's the point of, what's the point of creating the zoning in the first place?
Right. And I, I don't, I don't care for the idea of the bonus, only for the fact that, I don't like the idea of increasing the density.
Neither do the abudders.
Neither do the abudders, and you're, and you're, and what you're saying is, we're creating, creating more affordable units, you can use different terminology if you like, but yet, you're saying to people, we want to give you an affordable place to live, where customarily, it's more expensive, but now, we're going to give you a project-type affordable place to live, because we're gonna make it so damn dense, you wouldn't want to live there even as the affordable.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, speaking as a developer, having worked, you know, working in a number of municipalities, you know, what's onerous? Is 10% onerous? When if you see a 10% inclusionary housing provision, I don't react in a negative way. That feels like that's part of the currency that I have to live with to do business doing this. You know, move the needle up to 12, 12 and 1/2, that's the other statistic or number that I see, quite frankly. I don't know that I changed my, my tune that much. We start getting to 15, 20, 25. We, you know, I, I was working in a town that had a cluster bylaw that said 25% had to be inclusionary, and there was a cap on density, and you looked at it, and you said, and it was this negotiated special permit process, so you said, okay, well, this looks and smells like 40B, why don't I just go do 40B? So it, it didn't, it did disincentivize me in that case to using the town's bylaw, and going through a rational, reasoned land planning exercise, which is what I like to do. Start with the land. What does the land, how does the land speak to you, and how does it, how can you work with the land and work with the environment, meaning that, not just the trees, but the environment in which that parcel is located, to develop something that belongs there? That's our approach. You know, there are other approaches, is, okay, we're just gonna cram as much in as we can. That's not our approach. So, you know, I, I don't think you're treading on water as it relates to, you know, discouraging, at least rational, reasoned developers like me, if you're in that 10, 12% range. I think when you start moving the needle above that, you know, yeah, it starts to get there. Whether it adds more to the, to the rent roll, housing roll, list, whatever the word is, you know, we just, we got one, against a denominator of 500. No, but might, it might be one that you would not have otherwise gotten. And I think there's a way to do it here, easily, without, you know, this bonus thing. The bonus thing is, you know, we, we end, you end up sort of pushing and pulling, and pushing and pulling, and you end up, in a sense, forcing more density on, to the parcel than the parcel necessarily should support, in order to, to sort of gain the, the, the percentage. So, I mean, I guess...
I mean, we're moving a lot of pieces here. We're, we're trying to endorse a plan that I think the board generally likes, that the neighborhood clearly likes, and has spent a lot of time working with the developer to, to create. But we're also trying to create a zoning article that is going to apply to other sites potentially, and therefore sets a precedence in two directions. And it has to be, it has to be endorsed by not only us, but by the, by the warrant committee, and also by the town meeting. And I'm, I'm somewhat worried about warrant committee, and I'm very worried about town meeting. And I just, I, I would be disappointed if this project was forced in a different direction because of us not being able to craft something that town meeting will arguably accept. Maybe they'll accept the 10%. They've accepted it once before, but it was close, and...
They've actually accepted 10% several times before, because the PUD over on Central Avenue was 10%.
Right. And the cluster was 10%.
And the cluster was 10%.
I mean, 12% makes no difference to you. It's still four units.
Right.
So I, I think we could...
But to your point, it's, that's a new precedent, and we may not want to do that.
I, I think you just make a good point about encouraging smart development relative to discouraging smart development, and having people come in here trying to connive things into the space.
It may be, it may be that the answer is that 10%, and if there's an overage, like 4 or 3 to, that you, you work some sort of contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We can't do it here, because that would be outside the scope of the article. But that would be a possible way of proceeding in the future, which I think we could certainly tell town meeting we were willing to consider.
In fact, the, the sort of townwide article that we're looking at developing for the next round, that's something we could then consider there, is what do you do with that decimal point? All right, that's when you put the amount into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, and that way, we could go to town meeting, say, look, we're already discussing whether or not it's possible to do that in this bylaw.
I think we can put up, we can push some of the sins here onto that committee, and suggest that these are things that we're dealing with at that committee level. And so that, that is a, a good potential consideration.
Right.
Okay. So we see who else wants to be heard on this article. Other questions, other questions for the developer.
Leave the bylaw.
And the developer's attorney. Okay, who else wants to be heard on this particular article? Well, what does the board, what does the board think?
I have two, one, one small comment, and one, one, something that will likely create discussion. And the first comment is just with regard to the name, Plan Unit Townhouse Development. I, I look at what the purposes of this bylaw does, and I also look at the fact that we're bringing up a condominium forum that we're going to be talking about, which would arguably include townhouses. And I wonder if we shouldn't consider something more along the lines of a, you know, estate preservation, plan development, or something along those lines. That just feels like what the intent of this bylaw is to me, which is really preserving some of these bigger estates. But I throw that out there for discussion. The other question I have is, is the, the need for the, the abutting, the multifamily project, and I just am interested in hearing the others' opinions on that, as far as, you know, do we want to, what's, what's the purpose of that? It doesn't seem to lead to me any, to correspond any of the purposes we're identifying in number two, but I'm, I'm just interested in hearing what the, what the comments are on that, because it feels overly restrictive to me. But anyway, that's, those are my two points for further discussion.
Well, I, I wrote it. It just seems to me the name is, it's, changing the name doesn't do anything to the article. It just causes an extra bit of time.
When you say you...
My concern is, I think we're, we're going into a condo planning process and...
To differentiate this from that?
I think there might be, there may be a point in doing that.
I have actually a quick comment on that, which is, I believe the warrant is going, has already gone into the proof stage.
Yeah, it has.
It's going back to the printer next week. And if you change the name of the article, you're gonna, and change it from Plan Unit Townhouse Development to Estate Preservation, however you want to change it, there are multiple paragraphs throughout this that you're now going to have to change. And I think it might be...
I question whether that's a reason to not change zoning, but I understand your point.
Changing the name, it doesn't change the zoning. It just changes the name.
When you say estate preservation, do you intend that they're always gonna preserve the building?
It's a point, it's a point. I don't need to go down, we don't have to have a long discussion on this, but I do think that, especially with us going into a planning process for arguably a planned, a townhouse bylaw, or a condo bylaw, it just feels like it's, it's gonna be duplicative at some point. But anyway, that, that was just one comment. My, my more important, I think, comment is the second, so that's...
All right. Well, the reason that's there, because this is Dan's multi-unit development, and rather than just plunk it down in the middle of a neighborhood with no multi-unit development, I suggested that it had to be near, in fact, to a but, an existing multi-unit development, so that it could not be said that it was inappropriate for its site, because it's right next to the same sort of development, multi-unit, as it is itself. So that was the reasoning.
Okay. I mean, in this particular case, I think we've got fairly good screening, and I actually live on Brushover Road, and I, it took me two years to discover the multi-using, multi-unit housing project behind it. So, you know, I think it's, the question of whether it's, you know, inconsistent with the other properties on the street, I think, probably remains. But in any case, I, I just, I believe it's overly restrictive. With the condo bylaw coming up, you know, my, my, I believe this is a good project. I want it to go forward. I do believe that that is probably a bit more restrictive than I would, I would usually endorse, and probably wouldn't endorse if we didn't have that coming up.
All right, then. What do you, what is the, what does the rest of the board think?
I think that restriction, if you will, is a, some might see it as a protection.
I think that we can, you know, we can discuss it. We've, we've got a working group on condominium development.
I agree.
We can discuss it. I think that we should support this as it, as it's written, and, you know, we may have a spirited discussion in town meeting anyhow.
I would guess we will.
So, what do you think, Board? Shall we recommend town meeting adopt this?
Yep, so moved.
Okay, we've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. That's a unanimous recommendation. Now, we're going to do a, the easier of the two sign ones, which we did last time. Look at your warrant, your warrant sheet.
Yep.
Do you have your warrant sheet? This is a, no, this is a, this is a piece of paper that has a selection from the warrant. Did you give it to them?
Ah, it's underneath the city of Quincy, yes.
Pick it out.
All right.
I went to the warrant committee. We recommended this last time. We said, this is great, what was, what was in the warrant before this. But it turned out, it turned out that I made a mistake in drafting it, and adding paragraphs F and G to subsection C of section 3 wasn't going to work. So, we had to change it to put the sub-paragraphs at the end of paragraph 5 of subsection C.
So paragraph 5, this is the new one?
This is the new one. And this is something, you can see, this is something the warrant committee, warrant committee and I worked out, and we, we, someone mentioned that we might specify that this has to do with exterior signs. And there is a definition of signs, of exterior signs. There's a definition of interior signs too, in the bylaw, interestingly enough. And there's a definition of signs. But this has to do with lighting of exterior signs, and other than mention, other than change where it goes, and to add the word exterior before sign, it's the same, the same article as we recommended last time.
No, it's not.
It's not?
Yep, you're missing the dark sky compliant.
Okay, now Ted, Ted is going to tell us how it differs.
I sort of brought in our recommendation.
We've got your recommendation, but...
So the difference, the difference is the placement in the article.
Right.
The placement in your section. And, and also, we got rid of some of the language. There was no particular scientific justification for...
Dark sky.
Dark sky compliant.
Oh, dark, yes, yeah.
It actually is, it's capitalized terms.
You were able to give it to us.
Right.
I went to the, I went to the, I Googled dark sky compliant, and...
Did you find the international association?
There was no definition of dark sky compliant.
There's an international association of dark skies that has...
There is, there is an association, but they don't have, they, and they, they have...
They have all sorts of recommended zoning language for, for dark skies.
I understand, but they don't, they don't have, dark sky compliant is not a, is not one of them.
Did you find out what was the correct one to put in there?
I, it beat the hell out of me. I couldn't figure it out.
We didn't think it was going to be enforceable, nobody could tell us what about.
And there was something else that we had.
We got rid of the line, the end of the, the first change.
Ambient light.
But which exceeds a factor of 3 above ambient light.
Oh, yeah. I put that in because I lifted it from something else, and I went to ambient light measurement, and I couldn't, for the life of me, figure out what a factor of 3 represented with respect to the ambient light intensity.
You can measure the ambient light?
Yeah.
By a factor of 3?
Well, once you measure the ambient light, you can multiply it by a factor of 3.
Right.
And, and what do you get?
You have the same situation with ambient sound, and you can multiply.
But your ambient, you, you have to establish it somewhere.
Is the ambient light pre-lighting?
This is the ambient light at any point that it touches...
Well, then, you, you, what you're saying is, you'd have to add additional language that says, within a 60-foot square area, the ambient light from the sign.
If you multiply it by 3, how does it work? Is it like a 60 watt?
Foot candles.
It would be 100 and...
They measure in foot candles, huh?
Ambient light is measured in foot candles.
All light is.
Yes, all light is.
Okay. And any of that, it came out. I couldn't...
You, I mean, you could measure that.
But it, we could have done a standard, but saying...
The only thing that you're missing in the ambient is, like, you, I thought you were getting to, and that is, where do you measure the ambient, or to what vicinity do you measure the ambient?
Well, what we said...
You'd have to say, within 80 feet of the sign in question, measure the ambient.
Okay, hang on. It, it says this. Illumination shall be shielded or directed so that it does not shine directly onto neighboring properties, and shall be dark sky compliant. We weren't able to...
I'm working out the dark skies compliant requirements.
All right.
I think the measure's the thing that, I'm not questioning what you're doing, Emily, I'm just thinking, the measure's...
That's what I'm looking for, is measurements.
And then, it says, "High-intensity lights shall not be used, provided that the board's selectmen for good cause and superior design may authorize lights which have no adverse impacts, but which exceed a factor of 3 above ambient light intensity, measured at any point on the ground."
Well, but you still have to... Well, but you still have to say, measure at any point on the ground within 50 feet?
I, that's what it said.
I mean, I'm always speaking to the fact that, how do you, how do you answer something?
You're trying to correct it.
Right, if you say.
How do you define it?
How do you define, yes, absolutely.
Because then somebody could say, well, I took the ambient light measure, and it's five times more than you think. Well, yeah, but I took it over here.
You have to take it somewhere, and then multiply it by three.
Right. But you have to decide, within the bylaw, the limits of where you're gonna take it.
But which exceed?
I'm agreeing that you could keep your language, you just maybe have to.
I guess it would be the lesser, the least ambient light, three times the least ambient, rather than the most ambient light.
Fine, but still, you have to say, within a 50-foot radius of the sign.
Right, but you'd have to, you'd have to define that it was, in any event, it got taken out in the warrant committee draft, and it seemed to me to, that it wasn't a standard. It was a standard, and I actually, at the last hearing, said, someone needs to check this.
And nobody did.
No, I did. What did you find out about dark sky compliant?
Actually.
It's very important.
Rather, a lot, but it's all in very tiny print on my phone. So what I was gonna suggest is that we leave it out for now, but we may want to consider a lighting bylaw, because we've been adding it to a couple of other things recently, and we've been adding some of the technical requirements without knowing that we're necessarily doing that. I think we ought to consider a lighting bylaw later on.
Okay.
But we can leave it out for now.
Both of the things you talked, we've talked about, though.
It's creating standards, basically, is what we're trying to do.
To the illumination.
Right.
And the intensity of the illumination.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to do.
We're trying to be.
Limit the intensity.
Establish a standard that the building inspector can figure out.
Well, and see, that.
Light doesn't blind people.
That's the problem that I have with the no adverse impacts, is we're not, to Mike's point, we're not defining what adverse impacts are. So, the intent of doing the dark sky compliant, the intent of doing the factor of three above ambient light, is to establish.
Take a look at that.
In other words, otherwise it's very discretionary.
No adverse impacts is not, yeah, it's completely discretionary. That is not a standard.
Eliminating this three times the ambient, the dark sky, you've taken out discretion.
It is, it's whatever the selectmen say.
Yeah, but that, that opens up a can of worms for the selectmen, where somebody says, this is adverse impacts, and this other person said, no, it's not adverse impact, and they have to make a judgment call.
They say, we think it is, we think it is.
Isn't that the exact flip side of what, why you eliminated the language?
Right.
Because you can't measure it? Well, how can you measure something that's discretionary?
Right.
Well, no, I mean, once.
At some point.
I mean, what I want, what I really wanted was to let the selectmen do it.
That's what you got.
So then, yeah. So all I'm saying is, at some point, we need to consider a bylaw that establishes the standards that we can all be comfortable with, so that selectmen don't have to make a discretionary decision, because they have the standards by which they can make their decision.
I, you know, I, I agree, and we, we tried, but I, I think that it was, I agree. Who wants to be heard on this particular change? We've already, we've already had a hearing, and people have already, no one testified. No one's going to testify now. What does the board think? Shall we adopt the warrant committee's thoughtful changes? Which I helped.
I don't think they're very thoughtful, that's my thought. I honestly don't think they're very thoughtful.
No, no, I mean, what I helped most on doing was putting them, tagging them on to paragraph five.
Good job, Alex. Well done.
And then confessed that I had no idea how, what was dark sky compliant, or what the factor of three indicated.
So then the question becomes, is this something we want to go ahead and put forward, and then add additional standards to?
Right, well, we can do.
At our next round.
We don't, we don't want this sent, we don't want this sent back to us for study. The board of selectmen, and there are people who want a light bylaw, and.
Yes.
And we really owe it to them, too.
But this is effectively saying, you can do whatever you want, and as long as it doesn't bother anybody, according to nobody's specific discretion, then it's not a problem.
Well, as saying the selectmen have to figure it out.
Yeah, temporarily, we're putting quite a burden on the selectmen.
No, we're not. It's helpful to them.
Did you ask them if it was helpful to them?
No, they want it. They want, well, I think they want it. They'll, they'll get to pitch in on this one. Okay, what do you think?
I'm willing to have a go-forward with the stipulation that we need to have an overall light bylaw. After, after this is done, we need to revise and put some standards in there.
We need to explore more specificity.
Criteria.
With respect to light.
Yes, exactly.
I think that, I agree with that.
We need criteria.
Okay. So, Mike, is that a second?
Put you on the spot.
You seen me move, huh? Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of recommending this to the town meeting for approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Wobbly.
I'm gonna vote no.
One no. We still have, we have three strong ayes, one floppy aye, and one no.
Wavery aye.
Well, it just, I guess the.
We're going to.
As what you're getting, it establishes a bylaw that we can.
We can add to later on.
We can modify, I guess.
This is something, this is something that was wanted, and it may not be perfect, but it's, I think it's better than nothing. Okay, now.
Sorry.
All right. And the warrant committee was thrilled.
How do you, how do you go to nothing?
Okay, now, signs in residence districts. This will be our last topic of the night, I believe.
Fine by me.
Yeah, we've got Quincy, but other than that.
It's just a notice.
It's just a notice. Then it's our last topic of the night.
All right. So, now, a couple of things. A number of people, this has to do, currently, we have a, a sign bylaw for residence districts in section three, subsection B. Subsection B, section, paragraph three, which says, in A, no person shall erect any permanent sign of any type in any residential zoning district of the town. And this seems a bit harsh. And so, and then it says, there is an exception to that. It says, any permanent sign lawfully erected and existing as of the date of adoption of this bylaw. Do we know when it was adopted, Bill? It was adopted about 15 years ago.
It's in the back, under amendments.
Okay, and then it says, any sign permitted by the board of selectmen is necessary for public safety or the public health. And I suppose they could stretch certain things, but it seemed like, like we should, we should, we should address what signs are permitted, and, including temporary signs. Currently, in B, temporary signs are permitted, and it doesn't say anything about how big they need to be, how many they need to be, it's just temporary signs. You can put them up whenever you want to. And temporary signs are, it doesn't, it does, I think it defines temporary sign as only existing for 45 days. But it did seem reasonable that we should have some standards for both permanent signs and temporary signs. And the standards that we're suggesting here are not meant to be really restrictive, they're just meant to be, to provide standards. And if people think that three square feet isn't enough, we could do a blanket four square feet. It is, it is meant to just let people know what they can do and what they can't do, and I've really tried to, to touch all the bases, although I got a call from a clergy person just recently, who said, we would like to put a sign, the Episcopal Church welcomes you, St. Michael's Parish, someplace, and probably on public land. And I don't think that that's permitted. It isn't permitted, and it's, unless it's for the public health, maybe, or for the spiritual health of the, it's up to the selectmen to figure it out, but.
I see a theme.
Light again, signs.
In any event, this is.
Good luck, we wanna go home.
This is, this is meant to provide some standards. We discussed it briefly with the warrant committee, and people said, your number sign, your sign should be able to be illuminated.
But is it going to be compliant with dark sky?
What I said.
Well, I'm sure it's not now.
What I said was, what I, I mean, there was a suggestion made by the warrant committee, but I think that I've done even better suggestion. The warrant committee was, signs shall not be unconventionally illuminated, and I think we should say, signs shall not be illuminated other than by a low, steady, white light. A low-intensity, steady, white light.
You also have, signs shall not be illuminated without authorization by the board of selectmen, up in the top paragraph. So does that mean, anytime a homeowner wants to?
Signs should not be illuminated other than by a low, steady, white light without authorization.
Where are you?
Well, we're under three signs in residence districts. Are you in the temporary signs department?
No, I'm under three signs in residence districts. One.
Go to the second to last sentence.
I have, signs shall not be illuminated without authorization by the board of selectmen, in instances where the board of selectmen is required to consider authorization for a proposed sign, the board's review shall include the proposed design content and construction of the sign.
On that second sentence.
Yes.
I suggest, signs shall not be illuminated other than by a low-intensity, steady, white light without authorization by the board of selectmen.
My apologies, I didn't realize that hadn't actually been put in.
And I think that's better than saying unconventionally illuminated.
I agree.
All right.
That's good.
So, that change.
That brings me back to my initial question.
Yeah.
Does that mean that every time a homeowner wants to illuminate their address, they're going to have to come in for permission from the board of selectmen?
If they do, with the steady, low-intensity, white light, they're not going to have to.
Just double-checking, because it will be asked.
So you're gonna give me what you wrote, right?
I'm gonna give you this whole thing. Okay, now, that was the only change with respect to permanent signs. On temporary signs, they, we wanted to add, in the first paragraph, right before, only the following are permissible temporary signs, going to repeat the language that we had in the prior paragraph, which says, when reference is made to the board of selectmen in this paragraph, such reference shall include the town's sign review committee, or the board of selectmen's designee, under procedures established by the board of selectmen for that committee or designee. And we have it in the prior paragraph, and initially, the two paragraphs were one paragraph, but they somehow became two paragraphs, so, two paragraphs. So, we add that, and then in little roman numeral five, there was a discussion, and I think that we, we got, we thought this would be good. Signs giving notice of a private event, such as a yard sale, on a lot, provided that any such sign shall not be erected for more than seven days before the event, and that any such sign shall be removed no more than one day after the event, and then no such sign.
What is that?
That no such sign shall be placed on public property without authorization by the town, no such signs shall exceed four square feet.
Um, Alex?
Yeah?
I'm not splitting here, so the warrant committee recommended, where you have the word private event?
Yeah.
The warrant committee recommended personal. Is that a little different?
Leave out such as a.
Yeah, leave that out, because that'll, we think that that'll make town meeting.
Okay, signs giving notice of a personal event?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are town events that are private, so that makes sense.
Okay.
After the spirit of.
Let's say, of a personal event. I actually knew that the warrant committee had said that, but I changed it, but I'll change it right back. Signs giving notice of a personal event, seven days before the event, the sign can go up, one day after the event, they come down, and the signs, no such sign shall exceed four square feet.
Two days.
What?
Two days after?
Two days? Just leave the two, Alex, the two, okay.
Oh, I had to note that you wanted one.
No, I think you kept the two, actually.
All right.
Can I ask you to check the general bylaw to make sure that the numbers comply?
Uh.
Thank you.
Under police regulations?
Under police regulations.
Okay, I, you know, I'm inclined to think. No, I, I do incline to think that maybe we should simply say that all, have a minimum of four square feet for all signs. I have a whole bunch of three-square-feet signs at the beginning, in permanent signs.
And you've got at least one under temporary, under a small roman numeral four.
Yeah. I would think, I would think we would leave that, let the warrant committee hash it out, and if they think four is right, do four.
Three square feet is pretty small.
Two by two?
Two by two is four square feet.
So why don't we say four?
Four, all the way, wherever it says three.
Wherever it says three, four.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Here, we'll, still a problem, Mike.
Okay. So that's all, that's, that's all I have on this one. We're going to, we're now going to hear some criticism of this work of mine. Come on up and join us. Introduce, introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Cindy Christensen, 59 Collmar Street, town meeting member, precinct seven, and I'll start off by saying, according to the current zoning bylaws, a light is a sign. The problem I have with this is that, I gave some of you the full packet, most of you just got my cover page, but here's my concern. We're all thinking of a sign as what we all think of as a sign, but the current bylaws, section one, definitions 10 through 14, define a sign. And as far as I can tell, a sign is almost anything except personal thoughts, like what I'm thinking right now is not a sign. The azalea bush in my front yard is a sign. It includes objects, or an object is any kind of material thing that can be seen. It includes objects, where an object is any kind of material thing that can be seen or touched. It includes lights. It includes colors. And it includes all kinds of other things that we typically think of as signs. So, changing Section Three, every place where you see the word "sign," it actually means it could be an object, a board, a placard, paper, symbol, banner, streamer, letter, number, emblem, logo, color, display, or light, or any combination, according to the current bylaws. So, before changing Section Three, I'm wondering, why isn't Section One being changed? And if you do change Section Three, what I've highlighted for you in my item number five is that below the part that's being changed, there's something that refers to that subsection that also needs to be considered for changing. I mean, the -- I -- those of you that got my full handout, I've got a somewhat absurd example of a welcome sign to the left of my front door. And what I find in the health policy research work that I do, that if you put in some kind of extreme example, you can often find holes in the written words that you're trying to use. And this all points, all the problems point back to Section One, Definitions 10 through 14. So according to this, the way it's written, the welcome sign to the left of my front door would be a sign. So would those little green men that people in my neighborhood need to put out to slow traffic down. Those would be signs. I don't know if they'd be temporary, or they would be exterior. So I'm here to ask, why isn't Section One being addressed when we all sit and we think about signs? And what comes to my mind, too, is a sign you put out in your front yard, but that's not what the definition says.
What's the only thing, the only thing that -- and I'm not criticizing what you're saying, I'm just trying to understand and interpret. The only thing I heard you say is "object." Otherwise, I would think, yeah, the little green guy is a sign.
It is a sign, yeah. So are colors, according to the current definition. I don't know what that means. So is a light as a sign, according to our current definition.
Except for a low-intensity, steady, white light.
Right. So I'm just here to ask, before you put this -- I mean, I sat here a long time tonight. I don't want to sit here a long -- sit through town meeting for a long time, when people start saying, "But what about lights? What about colors? What about objects?"
What -- but I think that, you know, what we've done here is we've, as I said in my email to you, these are sort of traditional signs that, you know, that little square signs.
That's what I thought when I first read it, too.
I mean, what we're saying is that you can have these little square signs, and whether or not you can have lights and objects and other stuff, azalea bushes, whatever, under the definition section. I mean, presumably, if they're signs and they're permanent, they're not permitted now, if they are. But I'm not sure the building inspector -- but you've got a point that we could tighten up the definition section. The problem with deciding to redefine the word "sign" is that I remember the last time, or the time before, that we tried to redefine "sign," that it was a -- things went crazy.
Well, it looks like it did. This seems crazy.
We've got an approved definition now. What I'm suggesting that we do doesn't really -- it fits within that definition, obviously. And it doesn't cause any more harm than the definition may already have had. And it actually does some good, because it says you can have these particular traditional-type signs, rather than nothing. So--
Here's the problem I have with it, though, is that it comes with enforcement. I've, you know, I've lived in the town a little more than three years now, and what I have seen is, there's a lot of who you know or who you are, as far as what gets enforced and what doesn't. And what I don't want to have happen are people in my neighborhood, who I represent, to have a bylaw, enforced or not enforced, because of a poor definition of what a sign is. And I've heard this from people who've lived in Milton a long time, people who have just moved in. It's a matter of, you're opening up a door for poor enforcement--
But the door is already open, because the bylaw is there, and it says, "No permanent signs." And, you know, temporary signs have to be taken down every 45 days. So, I mean, if there were enforcement of this, rather -- if there were enforcement of your azalea bush, saying, "Cindy, you've got to dig out that azalea bush."
Or I don't, someone doesn't like the color of it. I mean, you know, it's--
But I--
That's the current -- I know it's absurd.
Once again, once again, once again, what we've done is made it somewhat better, within the definition.
I disagree, but, okay. I disagree. And it's not within the definition.
It is within the -- anything is, as you point out, a lot is within the definition.
Yeah.
And we could, you know, along with developing light standards, lighting standards, do some work on the definition of signs. Maybe we, you should submit what you think the definition should be. That would be helpful.
Alex, you're an attorney. Can you speak to the reasonableness standard of law here? I mean--
Oh, if they said the azalea bush is a sign, or-- I think that if you were to go, your enforcement authority would say, "This bylaw, as applied is not, does not hold water." And so they said, "We won't enforce it to the extent that it's, you know, it's obviously legal."
I mean, I'll define a sign for you right now. I'll take out the word "object, color, and light" from the current definition.
All right. We'll take a look at that. We can't redefine "sign" this time around, but you've got a point.
Got a good point.
Yeah. Well, and please also pay attention to this other section that needs to be referred to if this change is being made.
Okay, let me--
That's my item number five.
I found the other one.
Okay. I just, you -- remember, we do have a Section Three.
It's a living thing, an object.
What I say here is, there's a--
No, I mean, there's a reference to it, but let's take a look at it and see if--
Azalea bush wouldn't be an object.
See if it--
So--
Okay, now, one second. We're going to, well, the bylaw, before we close, the bylaw bill is going to tell us something.
Signs may be erected no more than two days prior to the sale and must be removed no later than the following, the day following the sale.
Okay. But that, like, other signs can be for seven.
Okay, so we have to take the seven back to--
That's real estate, right?
That was real estate? You didn't specify what you meant by "sale."
No, that's on a sign. Signs giving notice of a personal event on a lot, provided that any such signs shall not be erected. That one.
What was--
What did you just read?
By law, it actually says thirty-seven.
It says, it has to do with yard sales.
Okay, that's what we were wondering, sales of, yes. Sale of what, house or--
So the yard sale is covered somewhere else.
Only on private property. No signs will be permitted on town streets, poles, trees, or sidewalks. Signs may be erected no more than two days prior to the sale, must be removed no later than the day following the sale.
Okay, but it fits within what we're doing, so--
I agree, we should just take out the reference to yard sale, that's all.
We'll just take it out. And, yes.
We could be very specific and say that they were for personal events other than yard sales.
Excuse me, Bill, that's just for yard sales, the language you just quoted?
Yep.
So if you just say, "Personal events other than yard sales," that way you're allowed to advertise your wedding or your--
It says, "No yard, garage, porch, or barn sale shall be held on any property in the town without the property owner or occupant of said property first obtaining a permit from the Board of Selectmen."
And then it goes on to give the time thing. But doesn't it fit within it? Doesn't it, wouldn't it fit within it without changing it? Because seven days, or two days is within seven days.
Yeah, as long as you take the yard sale out, it's fine.
No, because it has-- Can you read the, read that again?
Article thirty seven, Section Thirty-Seven. "No yard, garage, porch, or barn sale shall be held on any property in the town of Milton without the property owner or the occupant of said property first obtaining a permit from the Board of Selectmen. Not more than two garage, yard, porch, or barn sales shall be held by any property owner or occupant of said property within a one-year period. But the Board of Selectmen may grant more than two permits per year to a religious, educational, or other charitable organization. Only articles and items owned by the property owner or occupant shall be sold at the yard, garage, porch, or barn sale unless, in the judgment of the Board, the sole intent of the sale is to benefit a charitable organization located in the town of Milton. Each permit granted by the Board of Selectmen shall be not more than two consecutive days of sale. Signs will be permitted only on private property. No signs will be permitted on town streets, on poles, trees, or sidewalks. Signs may be erected no more than two days prior to the sale, must be removed no later than the following, the day following the sale."
So, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll probably follow it.
Oh. Do you like it? Me, too. I think if we just call it a personal event other than a permitted sale.
Why not just "other than a yard sale"? Why not "other than a yard sale"?
Why don't you just say "personal event," leave it alone? Because you've already got yard sale covered.
There's several garage sales.
Yeah, but it's all generic yard sale.
You need a permit for them, and this will--
Yeah, but people don't get permits.
And that could, you could have to get a permit for a wedding to your--
We're trying to cover signs for things that you don't even--
Some people have a yard sale get a permit?
So like a wedding, or something.
I understand, but people don't get permits for yard sales, do they, Bill?
Yes, they do.
They do.
Well, they're supposed to. Whether or not they actually do is another matter, but they're supposed to.
Okay, you're saying, "Other than a permitted event"?
Other than a permitted, other than an event that requires a permit.
Other than permitted sales.
Yeah.
Or a sale as referenced in this section.
Other than a permitted sale, how does that sound?
I think you could talk for--
You don't like that.
I just take it out.
Is that the head?
I think that the Board thinks that if you just say, "Signs giving notice of a personal event," does the trick, and then yard sale, that, you know, a permitted sale is covered somewhere else.
Exactly.
Great. I like that, too.
Great. Okay, so doing nothing is our--
It's more elegant.
Okay, now, on Section Three-A seven, little Roman, no, little I. It says, "A dwelling used primarily and principally for residential purposes may be used incidentally but without public display of goods, wares, or signs, except as permitted in Section B three hereof." And the new Section B three has to do with signs for these things, so it works.
Does it need to include B four?
No, that's temporary signs.
And I'll finish by asking that you check the definition of temporary and the default permanent sign definition, to make sure it's consistent, and for these two articles, you can specify.
It is Section One.
And these definitions also appear in the sign manual, just--
As they should.
Yeah, well--
But that's for the selectmen. That's citizen speak at the selectmen.
What is?
The sign manual.
Well, no, I'm done.
Isn't that a selectman document?
Mine.
It's your document.
I mean, you know, no, I mean, he's, well, he's here.
All right.
The definition needs to be changed, it's just obvious.
The definition of "sign."
Sign.
Well, I think--
It just can't be changed under this article.
I think we're agreeing with you, that you're making a good point. We just can't do it tonight as part of this article, but I think we, I think you're right. When you look at it, it's pretty--
It's anything. All these little things, I don't know if you got my full handout here, but it's--
Yes, we did.
It's the little snail thing that blows in the wind.
I looked at that definition, and I just couldn't face--
I couldn't, I, yeah.
I just want to mention that--
Under advisement.
I'm pretty sure that colors refers to things like regimental colors, flags, banners.
Oh, interesting.
It's strike the colors.
It's interesting.
No, why would you if that's the case?
That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, it does.
That makes a good sense.
Yeah, it is singular, it means it's just its color, but--
If it's singular, probably a title.
Okay. Yeah, that was made for that.
We could have another, a look at it another day.
Move it to red.
Yep. We'll move it to the ambient light and the dark sky compliance discussion.
Yes.
All right. Well, this is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else is going to want to be heard on this? We've got a lot of people here, but none of them seem to want to be heard on it. Okay, planning board, what do you think?
Move just to recommend as amended?
Okay. And it just, we have a second, don't we, Ed?
Yes, second.
I thought so.
Seconded it as well, actually, officially.
Two seconds. Okay. Further discussion? All right. I think that we will see who's in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a unanimous recommendation, and I will go to the warrant committee and give them the good word.
You're going to give those to Emily, right?
And I'm going to give these, this to you.
Oh, Emily's, yeah.
Emily.
Emily's.
Okay. Now, there is going to be marijuana available on Ricucci Drive.
Rashudi.
Rashudi.
Rashudi Drive?
Yep.
Okay. Will you give us the details on that, Emily?
I will.
Bill will. I know nothing about it.
Right. Any directions?
Exactly.
When the city of Quincy has a zoning Board of Appeals agenda, they forward that agenda to the town of Milton, as they are required to, that we do the same thing. We take our zoning Board of Appeals agendas and send them to Quincy. I take a look at each one of these locations, and the last one on October seventh is due to be, "Hermont Inc., for a special permit for a medical marijuana dispensary on the premises numbered 216 Rashudi Drive. It's not for anything except informational purposes." I always check to make sure that there is not something happening on our borders. This one's close enough to our borders to be--
Is this one right near the reservoir?
This is right near the entrance to Quarry Hills. This is right near the auto auction, actually, right beside the auto auction.
Oh, is that the, it's, that's--
That's Rashudi Drive. Going out to Quarry Hills.
So it's going to be where Clifford's used to be?
Yes.
Okay, that, now everyone knows.
You know how to get there.
It's very good of you to clarify that, Alex.
Anybody that's interested, that's on Tuesday, October seventh. This is one of those things that, we had the tower put in and nobody knew. I do actually watch these things. I do take and check off each one, as you can see by the ticks that are on the page that you were handed.
Are you going?
It's just an FBI.
Is somebody from the town going?
I had not planned on going.
I have a client meeting that night, I can't go.
I think it's, I think it's something, well, worthwhile knowing. Okay. Anything else, Bill? Do you have a report to give us?
I could, but it's probably too long. I do know that Emily and I are going to Tufts on October ninth.
Yes.
Emily Martin?
No, this Emily.
Emily Innis. My bad. We're going to talk about having a team of students come and look at East Milton Square.
Planning students from Tufts, yeah.
And then, in the spring, we'll go back and have other ones that will look at the historic center out front of Town Hall.
This is following on from the master plan. They're taking a look at the document and looking at some of the areas, East Milton. We chose East Milton Square because of the parking recommendations there. we chose East Milton Square because of the parking recommendations there. The idea is that the students would follow along from that and look at other improvements, designs for other improvements that could be made in East Milton Square after that's done. So, it's an exercise for them. They'll get to meet with the Board of Selectmen, they're going to probably meet with the Chamber of Commerce as well, probably come and meet with us. And then, what they come up with, we may display in the media, the library. We haven't talked with the teacher about that, but, and then, the same thing for where they're looking at how to knit together all the municipal buildings and create a center. We will probably have them meet with all sorts of people, including the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, and then come up with some ideas which will be displayed, some of which may be something the town wants to take on, and some of which won't. But it's a, it's a good planning exercise for the students, and it's good for the town to get these fresh ideas coming in and seeing what they'll do with it.
Just a little bit of feedback, I have been in other, worked in other communities, have done the similar thing. I would recommend, since we're taking, you're taking the energy, your, Bill's taking the energy, that we actually, at the end of the process, have it presented to a joint meeting of the Selectmen and Planning Board.
That's a great idea.
As opposed to just display it, I think that would be.
The students would probably be thrilled to be.
Well, and I think we'll give the opportunity for some public comment or whatever as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to make that recommendation.
It's a great idea.
In the package you received tonight, yes, you've got the housing production plan. Don't forget, you have the red line at home, if you want it electronically. You have the 40B peer review documentation in front of you. If anybody wants it electronically, I have it electronically as well. Just let me know. You have, in that same set of packets there, you have citizen training planning collaborative courses for the fall, fall semester. You have in front of you the Curry College field issues. The May Town Meeting stated that the Selectmen and Planning Board would, would get together and, you know, address the field issues. There is a letter in there from Curry addressing their field issues right now. I know that Dennis and I are due to need to go through the letter and see what's going to be said at Town Meeting. I've also been dealing with issues of the Yulin Rink. The Yulin Rink's been open since September 2nd. The town is going through a response to a letter that was submitted to the newspaper on, from the Friends of Yulin Rink, primarily addressing some of the legal issues and some of the public skating issues. The public skating, Yulin actually started Wednesday, September 3rd. They've been open Wednesdays since then, and though it is 11:30 to 2:30, it gets a pretty good crowd coming in. There's between 10 and 15 people there during that period that is skating. In October, there, and it's also open on days that school is not in session, so it was open today, and there were students there. Come October, it'll be open Wednesdays plus Saturday and Sunday. In November, it will start its regular schedule. We are the only rink that was a DCR rink, whether it's run privately or by a town, that is open for public skating in September and October. So, for as much as I'm getting beat up in the newspaper for not helping the kids, we're the only rink that's out there that's a DCR rink that's open to public skating. That's it.
All right.
Yeah.
I don't think we approved the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't make the, I'm missing a set. I don't get to see one of the sets. Was there only one set of minutes?
Fourteenth is the one.
I didn't see.
You haven't seen the 14th?
Well, it wouldn't help to, no, I saw the 14th. The 11th wouldn't help, because I wasn't hearing it.
All right, let's do the 14th. Any changes to the 14th?
To approve?
All right. All in favor? Aye.
You could do the 11th if you want.
Okay, let's do the 11th.
Emily wasn't here.
I wasn't here, anyway. So, my changes, would it matter? Because I wasn't here. Looked awesome.
All in favor of the 11th?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, nice job, Emily. Warren.
You're just gonna have to do last names.
Member, member Innis, member.
Okay, now.